As we normally do. A couple of other things just to mention, so we have booked an hour for this afternoon. We have a lot of great presentations and panelists to get through. We want to make sure that we save time for both the pre-submitted questions and the live questions, and I'll explain how that works in the webinar function once we get to that section, so don't worry about it now. And if some questions we might not be able to get to this afternoon, but we will work very hard to get an answer directly back to you. And if a question comes into your head because of one of the presentations or afterwards, please email marketing@ccri.edu, and we will make sure that we get either a response directly to you, or we'll include the question and answer in an upcoming edition of CC Daily. And so with that, it is just 2:04, and why don't we get started? And I'll turn it over to President Hughes.
Thank you so much, Amy, and good afternoon, everyone. Really happy to be back together in this setting and hope this is the last time we have to hold a town hall entirely virtually. I think as we move to returning to campus, I think we'll continue to set up this kind of option so that those of you that are not at the particular campus where we're meeting can have the opportunity to join. But I'm delighted to be here with all of you and to kick off the town hall and certainly to extend a big, warm welcome to Andrea Ray and to Nathan Brown. I know the two of them are eager to introduce themselves to you all in this town hall. So I'm going to cover just three with three slides, three topics, and then a fourth topic. So what I'll be walking you through, and Amy has a slide for each, is an overview of what the governor released just about two weeks ago, his budget. The look, take a look at our next five years with our capital improvement plan. Do a review of what our enrollment position is for this spring, and then conclude with just some remarks and an update on the equity work that's taking place at the college. So with that, let's jump into the first slide, which will give us just a very high-level summary of what the governor released. So what you're going to see here, I guess I would draw your attention to two things. It is both a look at what the governor did in revising this year's budget, so the FY22 budget that we are in the second half of right now. And then he released his response to the budget that we presented to the council, that the post-secondary council approved. So the first thing I want to point out is we're looking at two different budget years on this slide, and the second is there are two inputs, right? The state appropriation, which put simply as the state funding that the state gives us each year, and the second is our debt service. So let me start with the first column, the first three you can see are speaking to 22. So you see that what was passed was a budget of $52.43 million. The state was in negotiation with its employees, many of whom work here at the college. And so you will see that the governor, in his budget release, added an additional $1.41 million, and that reflects the negotiated personnel increases that will take place here at the college. If you look forward then, if we stick with the top horizontal line, so the state dollars, state appropriation, and you look forward to what the governor has recommended, we put forward a request of $54.89 million, and you will see that the governor, excuse me, what am I seeing here? Huh, okay. Interesting. I'm seeing in live time that we need to correct this slide. The good news is the governor did give us just under $2.7 million in new money. So if you go all the way over to the second to last vertical column, the 23 gov versus 22, you will see that that is $2.69 million in what we would call new state money. And the way that that breaks down, that 2.7, once again, it's $1.4 million reflecting those increased negotiated personnel costs, and then another $1.3 million that he put in at the recommendation of his budget office to have the state dollars keep pace with our tuition increase. And I think that's the one part of the budget that he released that I would draw your attention to. We don't, first of all, we don't always see an increase from a governor's budget, and we specifically don't see an increase that is tied to acknowledging sort of the costs that we bear and that tuition dollars, in fact, only underwrite a portion of those costs. So I think it's good news overall for the college. We're grateful to the governor and now are pointing our lines towards working with the legislators to encourage them to approve this budget as presented. Very quickly on the state debt service, you're seeing very minor increases there of about $30,000, and that simply reflects, you know, we're on the bond now. We were approved by the voters, and that just means we have a very marginal increase, $30,000. I'll take a $30,000 increase for a $12 million bond. So Amy, if I can have the next slide, please. Great. So this is just a very high-level overview of our five-year capital improvement plan. This is a separate line on our budget, often spoken of colloquially as our CIP line, and there's a lot of good news here. If you scroll down on the horizontal lines and see that there are two lines there right in the middle, Phase One Modernization of Geo Bonds and then Phase Two Modernization Geo Referenda. And what you'll see there, let's start with the first one, the Geo Bonds, $4 million in this fiscal year, and then an additional $8 million next fiscal year. That reflects that $12 million bond that we successfully won, the voters of Rhode Island approved. Many of you will remember, that's the first time we were on a bond since the Newport campus was built. So it was really a historic return, and one of the things we're working to norm is, like our colleagues, Rhode Island College and the university, we have capital costs, and we need to be showing up on those higher education bonds in a more normed fashion. As a consequence, we were really grateful that the governor included in his budget an additional $12 million. So if you look at the FY24, that line that I described as the Geo Referenda, that is the governor saying, yes, I agree, the community college should appear on that higher education bond. We are once again on that bond for Rhode Islanders to consider for an additional $12 million. The rest of what you're looking at on this slide falls under our capital improvement programs. Many of you took part in the conversations we held to really build our master facilities plan, and this one slide, I think, really reflects how we're investing the state's money in order to build a truly state-of-the-art college. In terms of where are we right now, what can we get excited about, what changes can we look forward to seeing even in this fiscal year? Later this spring, you will see the sort of behind-the-scenes work, the getting-ready work, to take on that massive project of completely transforming the student services space here at the Warwick Campus, and we can then look forward to in the fall, so FY23, the groundbreaking for that work. So I am personally really excited to see that work get underway. The rest of the work that you will see here really is covering all the work that we need to undertake to update our campuses and make them places that are going to attract and inspire Rhode Islanders to come to this college. What we're looking at in terms of the next bond is really continuing to invest. We're going to see a new atrium, if we're successful, built in Providence, and we're going to see a great deal of work going into our labs and classroom spaces. So excited to see that move forward. Look to us to be talking to all of you about working with our legislators to encourage them and then to encourage Rhode Islanders to vote to approve this next bond. So Amy, if I could move to the next slide. Terrific. So what you can see on this screen, and I'm hoping you're able to see the data as you're watching, and I'm going to start with the spring enrollment. So there are two pieces here. On the left is our spring enrollment numbers, and a look back, and on the right is what our numbers reflect for winter session. So I want to begin with spring enrollment, and what you can see in 2020, that spring, all of you remember, that is really the first COVID spring. We converted to an entirely remote institution, and we saw where we were. So by the time COVID really changed the way we worked and lived, our students were already with us that spring. That spring's enrollment was just over 13,000 students, 13,070 students, which is the far-left green column. And you can see what happened the next year. We dropped to 11,45, and I want to now move to drawing your attention to the third and the fourth vertical column. So the yellow column is what we budgeted for. So we planned conservatively, which, as we all know, is the only way to build a budget, and we held ourselves accountable to hitting a target of 10,100 students. That is what we needed to hit in order to be in the black and not be running at a deficit. What the green vertical column on the far right represents is that all of you, every single one of you, our faculty, certainly our student services team, led by Dean Kasserick and the rest of the folks down there, all of our advisors and coaches and counselors, worked resolutely to beat that target and did so. So we are just about 3% above where we needed to be. We landed just over 10,400 students. And while I will say, no one can be satisfied with what that reflects, because we've been saying this now for two years, it reflects, in this case, thousands of empty seats. So thousands of Rhode Islanders who I strongly believe without COVID would otherwise be sitting and learning with us right now. It is a staggering decline. It's roughly a 25% decline where we sit right now. Those numbers, we all know, they're unheard of in the higher education space. They also reflect where the entire country is, most acutely in the community college space. So I know I met with one of you earlier today who, you know, were reading the same articles, were listening to the same news programs. These are unprecedented times. What I would offer is this, the work that all of you have done in order to hold on to the students that we do have and to recruit Rhode Islanders to come in and begin their journey with us or continue their journey is what has allowed us to do better than we planned for. And if I want, if I'm asking you to take away any message from what this slide reveals, I'd ask that you take a couple of messages. The first is, higher education has changed permanently. I don't believe any institution will be able to go back to the old ways of teaching, learning, and working. I think we are in an increasingly competitive landscape, and I think there are going to be winners and losers. I will frankly tell you, I think this college is strongly positioned to weather this challenge and come out even stronger on the other side. And one of the reasons I believe that to be true is that this entire community has proven itself from the very beginning of this pandemic to be adaptable. And when I think about who's going to win, it is going to be institutions that can adapt. When I think about one or some of the most powerful changes, we've gone from being an almost entirely exclusively bricks-and-mortar institution with, you know, 9%, never more than 9% to 10% of our sections being run online, to almost 40% being online this spring. What do I know? I know that we are going to have to have deep conversations as a community and as a state about what we want this college to look like going forward. I can tell you, my view is that we will need to continue to invest in online education, and we were founded as a college that has bricks and mortar and campuses across this state. And all of us, I think, chose to be part of a community that has a rich and vibrant campus life and that really allows us to engage with our students and with each other that, no matter how well online learning and teaching is done, I think just can't be entirely simulated. All of which is to say, I think we need to do two things simultaneously. We need to look at who is grabbing, who's grabbing market share? When, and I will tell you honestly, I think right now this is less of a challenge for us, but very much a challenge and absolutely a challenge for our four-year colleagues. Those institutions that can prove themselves to offer exactly what Rhode Islanders believe they're looking for, so a flexible institution that can sort of offer what they need when they need it, are going to be the ones that continue to grow. And most specifically, when I look at, you know, there are a couple of giant providers in this country, Southern New Hampshire University is one of them. When we look at the data and the penetration that SNU is making in Rhode Island, it's significant. For the four years, it is a very significant penetration. So I think we continue to be sort of looking ahead and being nimble and investing and doing the very best we can in sort of both offerings, both modalities. And I think we are going to need to continue to just realize the future of higher ed is going to be ongoing change, and the way that we will continue, I think, to be an excellent college is by reacting to what we're learning and what we're seeing and working to get ahead of it. Just in closing, very briefly, what you'll see on the right-hand side with winter session, we've more than doubled from the launch of our first winter session, and I want to thank our faculty especially for the work that you all have done in order to make it possible for our students to get just a little bit ahead, adding a few more credits so that they can get ever more closely to their certificate or their degree. So you'll see that when we launched back in 2019, we had 262 students, a very modest undertaking, and we have more than doubled that, right? 133% increase. Just this winter, we served 611 Rhode Islanders. I think if we can continue to really look to that kind of growth, that will become, I think, two things. It will become a very important way for Rhode Islanders to get to the graduation stage sooner, and it will become an important source of financial stability for the college. So I think this is an example of sort of everybody wins. It's doing a very helpful thing for our students, and it is helping the college be fiscally strong. So that is my last slide. I think what I'd like to close now, and I know that Andrea will be introducing herself, is just by calling out and thanking you all for the work that the whole college has come together to do, to really make this institution feel more diverse, feel more equitable, feel more inclusive. And I wanted just to elevate two topics very briefly. The first is, I just did a look back at our hiring data, going back to 2020, and I want to share what I've learned and I think room for encouragement, and I guess my request is, let's just keep doing what we're doing, because I think it's producing really encouraging outcomes. So back in 2020, just under a third of our new hires were Black, Indigenous, or people of color. So 29% in raw numbers, it was 12 of our 42 hires that year. The next year, we grew that number significantly, by 50%. So 43% of the hires in 2021 came from this group of talent. So 31 of 72 new hires. And just this year so far, so what are we, just about six weeks into this calendar year, nearly half of our new hires, so 46%, six of 15. And I just want to thank all of you who have been part of recruiting new talent, who have been part of search committees and are helping our new community members really sort of make, become part of this community at the college. So for all of you who are leaning into that work, I want to say thank you. I especially want to recognize our Office of Human Resources and our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and Organizational Development for helping lead this work in partnership with all of us. It is making a difference, and if we can just keep at it, I think we are going to continue to see really inspiring progress. Finally, before I turn it over to Vice President Ogden for an update on our COVID operations, I just want to close with a call out of encouragement to ask that you all do what you can to attend all or part of our Equity Summit, which is taking place at the end of this month, so Friday, February 25th, from 8:30 to 12:30. There are going to be some world-class workshops and seminars, many of them led by folks inside our college, and we are then going to have a keynote from Dr. Tia Brown McNair. I know that a lot of you have read this book. It's a book I have with me all the time. She co-authored this with some colleagues. What I love about the book is that it's actionable, and I feel incredibly honored that Dr. McNair is coming to CCRI. I think we're going to learn a lot from her. I think she can learn a lot from all of you about what your experience has been and what's working and how we can just continue to get better at what we're trying to do. So with that, I will turn it over to Alix Ogden. Really glad to be here, and thanks, everybody.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm really excited that we're going to see everyone back on campus starting next Monday. It's very exciting. So I'm going to talk to you today about kind of where we are with COVID, and I'm going to say something to you that I've said nearly for the past two years. We're still going to have to be flexible going forward and creative, so I'll share with you kind of this moment, kind of where we are today, what you can expect next week, and then I'm happy to take questions. So Amy, I don't see the deck. Okay. Great, thanks. Okay, we can advance the slide, thanks, Amy. So I guess I was going to start maybe with the national framing, because I just, this was information I heard today. So a month ago, the, we were, 800,000 people in the United States were testing positive. That's gone down to just over 300,000 a day, so that's a 61% decline. And I will share with you, obviously, that's what we're seeing in Rhode Island too and here at the college. So, you know, the Rhode Island landscape, again, just kind of a point of reference, you know, the week of January 8th, we were at over 20% positivity rate. Last week was at 12.3. All of the indicators that we follow, so the positivity rate, hospitalizations and fatalities, are all trending in the right direction. Hospitalizations and fatalities are, they are a lagging indicator, so, but they are absolutely decelerating. So what have we seen at CCRI over the past month or two months, really? We saw the same kind of arc that has been seen across the country and in the state. There was increasing cases from our testing program on campus. We did have some impacts to operations, if not from necessary infections, but people who had to quarantine. But our positivity rates, which were not very high anyway, have decelerated rapidly, and right now, we're in the low single digits on a daily basis and have had some days where we don't have any positive tests happening. So obviously, we are, you know, we will have more folks coming onto campus, and I want to tell you a little bit about what to expect when that happens. So we can go to the next slide. Thank you, Amy. So, you know, we have to be flexible. It's subject to change. We're going to listen to the people who are the experts in this at the Department of Health and the CDC. So over the past month, we did have to change our testing strategy because there was a very limited number of rapid tests in the state. So for some, for several weeks, we were only getting 300 rapid tests provided weekly, and that was down from an average of around 1,500. We had been told at the time that we should expect it to return to our expected levels. I will tell you that for going into next week, I believe that we've asked for, we've asked for 6,000 or 7,000 tests just to make sure we're totally prepared and have supplies for the week for our returning students, and we've been told we will get that supply, which I'm really excited about and glad for. So I think everyone is aware vaccinations and boosters are required for all employees and students as they become eligible. And if you're not yet eligible for a booster, you're required to get one within 30 days. There's still medical and religious exemptions that are available for both original vaccines and for boosters, but really, most of our communities either has boosters or are waiting boosters now. But the exemptions are there. So I guess one of the things I'll say is, we're going to continue to evaluate where in terms of our booster rates, and we may have to adjust as we're kind of moving through the semester. We're bringing back a lot of students who are becoming eligible kind of every day and every week, and we're going to have to really kind of assess where we are with that. The entry protocols are largely going to be familiar to you. So if you still have a green sticker, that means that you've been had the first set of vaccinations, but you're not boosted. So it's going to have a little bit different meeting this spring. If you provide a documentation of your vaccination booster, you're going to get an orange sticker, very visible, to show at the door. And so the orange stickers are now your fast pass. So I really want to encourage anyone who hasn't turned in their documentation to turn it in and get an orange sticker. We'll put you through the fast pass, just like we had in the fall. It just takes an orange sticker with a B on it. And then if you have a yellow sticker, that still indicates exemption status. So if you're exempted, if you're awaiting eligibility for your boosters, you're going to be required to show proof of negative test upon entry. So just so that expectation is there. So even if you're fully vaccinated, meaning you've done the first round of vaccinations, you still need to get a booster in order to be able to do the, get the orange sticker and do the fast pass and not have to provide a negative test. And finally, here we are, we're in the last stretch of our remote teaching and learning that we're, all the students are coming back on the campus on February 14th. We've had people definitely working remotely on a rotating basis while maintaining full in-person services, which I think is the really important part, is knowing that we've provided our students coming to campus with the experience that they need. And so for those people who have been working in this remote, rotating, remote fashion, where everyone's going to be back on February 14th, and I know I'm really looking forward to feeling the energy in the building when everyone's here. So I think I have one more content slide for everyone. So what to expect? Here I go. So we talked a little bit about screening protocols. They're going to look really familiar. Go get your orange sticker. And masks are be required, except when eating and drinking or alone in an office. I'm sure everyone has been hearing a lot of talk about changes in different states about K-12 masking. I do believe that the governor may be talking about that in his regular press conference tomorrow. We will be doing, so rapid tests are available if you're exempt or are waiting for eligibility. We are limiting, in the fall, we were doing rapids and PCRs for everyone that came to our testing center. This spring, we're going to limit the PCRs to confirmation of a positive test. So if you're symptomatic and test positive on a rapid, that's all we need to know. We're going to send you, we're going to send you home. If we give you the rapid and it test positive, we are going to do a confirmatory PCR there, and we're still going to send you home, but we're going to do the PCR. What we won't have available, which we did last, in the fall, is PCRs available kind of at the ready if you go down to the testing center. And the reason us, we believe that this is in terms of, in terms of protocol, this is still a very, this is a good way of finding out complete information about the people going to the testing center and their COVID status. So we're going to change up the operations a little bit. And then we are going to continue to find vaccinations and boosters on our campuses. What we are likely to do, instead of having it be kind of a five-day-a-week or four-day-a-week, depending on the campus that you're on, proposition, we may, we probably are going to convert it to one or two days on each campus, but there'll be availability every single week in order to access vaccination and boosters. And I guess I will wrap up just by saying, you know, we are really, we've taken a conservative approach to this the whole time. We've really come to it with the concern of the safety of our community foremost in mind. We're going to continue to do that, and I think that we're all hopeful that we're going to really be able to move back into being able to be around each other, to be able to collaborate face-to-face, and all the things that are so great. and all the things that are so great about working here. And I know being able to see our students and have that energy on campus, it definitely feels different without them here. So I think that's a pretty, I'm hoping that this is good news from here on in. And of course, if it isn't, we're going to have to adapt. But that's what we've been doing the whole time. So I really want to thank everyone for their support in terms of the restrictions that we've put in place and the protocols we've put in place. I really appreciate it. And also, I appreciate the positive feedback that we've received from doing so. So with that, I'll look forward to your questions and I'll turn it over to Vice President Costigan.
Thank you, Alix. Welcome, everyone. It's great to be here and addressing you today. I'm primarily speaking about a major initiative. So it's a single topic, general education. And Amy, anytime, I think I have just one slide and I'll just talk through it. But I would like to congratulate the Gen Ed Committee. Sean Parker was the inaugural sort of pioneer with this and a group of people that went out to Loyola University and looked at an outcomes-based core curriculum. That work has continued over five years and most recently led by Department Chair Dr. Leslie Kilgore and Dean Cole bringing it home. So we were very happy to approve a new policy last week that I am very confident will help our students transfer to at least our in-state institutions in a much more seamless manner. I would like to just share with you a couple of the highlights of the program. And then there'll be more marketing and communication and training that goes on. The four abilities that are the educated person, those were updated a couple of years ago. And that is where Professor Parker held town hall meetings. We will be looking to ensure that our distribution of Gen Ed, which will be a minimum of 20 credits out of R60, which is required, will hit on all four of these abilities. Within each of the four abilities, there are two subcategories. And in order to be approved for a Gen Ed, the course has to hit at least two subcategories. Now, what you have here before you is sort of a distribution wheel. And I'm not going to go much further than this. I know we're running a little bit short on time. But I'm going to start off first with the middle slide. And as you can see, we have our ability one, which is effective communication. We have, that goes through all of the different, all of the different abilities. And if you will just bear with me one moment while I get to, yes. Ability two, critical thinking. Ability three, quantitative reasoning, mathematical and scientific. And ability four, awareness of oneself in the world. So this wheel is very helpful so that we can build up. As we can see, ability three, we're going to need some additional courses. We also are required by NIEC to ensure that we have distribution across the domains. So that is social science, behavioral science, arts and humanities, and math and science. So we do have some work to do there, but this is an ongoing review. And I have 25 more courses in the queue to approve. And on the far left, my far left, is my sister institution. So currently, we have 114 courses that have been submitted through the process of approving for general education. Seven of those 114 exclusively transferred to Rhode Island College. Thirty-eight of the 114 transfer exclusively to the University of Rhode Island. And then the remaining 69, I believe it is, go to both institutions. Now, our goal is that that circle is all gray. We want to be able to see, that is what we're going to work towards with our colleagues, both at Rhode Island College and the University of Rhode Island, that whatever our Gen Ed core approved courses are, they are going to go to both institutions. That is the way we're going to be able to maximize our students' transferability and applicability with a core curriculum. One of the other caveats of our new policy is that English Comp 1010 will be required. There are some special circumstances where we will take another English course based on accreditation requirements for particular programs. But each of these domains have a certain number of credits. One domain can have up to nine and two others would be six and six to get us to our at least 20 minimum. Most of our general study students, if not all of them, they're transferring majors and they have general education credits that are between 32 and 34 credits. But some of our programs, such as nursing, you know, they're just hitting that 20 to 24 mark, many of the professional entry programs that we have. So a tremendous amount of work. I'm really happy. We're looking to launch in September. We are going to launch in September. We're working closely right now with our colleagues in advising and counseling. They have been critical and supportive as well as enrollment. So I'm going to conclude my remarks here. And more to come on this and introduce our new Executive Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, Andrea Ray. Andrea?
Thank you, VP Costigan. I really appreciate it. Good afternoon, everyone. It's really great to be with you all here. It's great to be on the first town hall as a member of the SLT at CCRI. I will be mindful of the time and we'll start with the slides. And what I wanted to do was try to be colorful in sharing with you who I am and my background. And so with this slide, you will see kind of an illustration of that. I started out, I am the first member in my family to graduate from college. I'm sorry, Amy, you could put the slide up. Thank you. Okay, so I am the first to receive a college and master's degree in my family, which I attended Temple University, Go Owls, and Walden University, respectively. There, I became a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, which is a worldwide organization that focuses on the service and development of underrepresented and marginalized communities, both within the United States as well as in 12 countries. And it was there that I really started to focus on social advocacy and really made that become a part of my journey and my career. So from there, I really got into this work 15 years ago when I started out as a HR associate. There's really what I learned about the impact diversity, equity and inclusion has on an environment, has on our employees, ensuring that they are being able to be as productive as possible and also giving them a place where they feel like they're welcome and included. And that was work that I wanted to continue on throughout my career. And it's really great to be here in this role and being able to do that for CCRI. So what you see on the outskirts of the slide is really kind of my background and the journey that I took to get to this place. But what you see in the inner circles is really who I am. I am someone who loves to cook. I'm a vegetarian. I've been a vegetarian about five years now. So you can see some of the dishes there in the slide in the top left. I am a dog mom. That is my opal at the top. She's 14 years old and she is showing it, but I love her to death. And then also, what you see on the far right is some cosmetic products. I actually started a couple of years ago making my own skin and hair care products. So I'm hoping one day to be on Shark Tank. But I really am joking about that, but I really do enjoy cooking and just being able to be in the kitchen and explore with different hair products. And what you'll see in the center is me. That is me in my happy place. That is on Martha's Vineyard. It is a place that I go every summer, that I really work to unwind and relax and just center myself into, you know, why I am grateful for what I have and what I'm doing and the people that are in my life. So really quickly, that is who I am, both background professional as well as personal. On the next slide, this is the priorities that we have identified in the DEI team for this year. I've been enrolled now for about five weeks and it's really been a great time in meeting with our senior leaders, our deans and key partners that have moved to push this work forward. I've been learning about the evolution of DEI, how we got to this point here at CCRI and really just learning about the great work and effort that have been made so far that we want to continue on and really help to build out. And so what you see here are those three priorities. The first one is focused on strategic planning. We are looking to build a three-year strategic plan that really focuses on the areas that we have been focusing on. What we want to do is really take a look at to determine how impactful it was to the college and determine whether or not we want to continue on, but also to continue to build out in the areas that we know are important based on our conversations that we're having as well as what I'm learning. The next is branding and restructuring. So as a small team, you know, we are mighty, but we want to make sure that we are being strategic in how we manage our time and both on existing as well as new projects. But we also want to make sure that we are able to give dedicated time to you, our clients, as a relation to this work, to ensure that you feel supported, to ensure you have the resources that you need and to ensure that we are available so you can be set up for success. And then the third priority is, and we do recognize that they may change, but for right now, the third priority will be focusing on training and development. So really thinking about the organizational development side of the house and focusing on how we can enhance our learning platforms to provide different levels of training and development for all of our employees. And this is related to the diversity work as well as building capabilities and wanting to grow and develop within your role as well. So really working to build a platform that will allow the entire college to access this information at your own pace. We'll also have some facilitated sessions as well, but really building that platform to bring that service to you. So that is the last slide. I would just say again that I am really excited about learning more about how we operate here at the college and how we serve our students to ensure that they are really getting what they need in their journey so they can really successfully complete their program. And so with that, I will turn it over to our new Chief Information Officer, Nathan.
Thank you very much. And hello, everybody. It's great to be here and get a chance to speak with all of you. I just wanted to start off by letting you all know just how excited I am to be able to be joining CCRI. It's just an amazing mission. I'm super excited with all the opportunities that we have and with all the people that I've met. And just like, I already feel like family, just like from my first day of coming on campus and having no idea where I was going and bumping into a campus police officer, showed me everywhere where I needed to go, everybody in the hallway. It just, I just felt like, you know, I was home right away and I knew that, you know, this was the right place for me. So just a little bit about me, I'm going to go really fast because I'm really excited to do the question and answer section and I want to leave lots of time for that. But I guess I probably shouldn't admit it, but I have over 30 years of experience in IT leadership. And I've worked in a number of different industries and/or different types of organizations. I've worked at three different environmental organizations for a long time. That's kind of where I started my IT career. This is the third higher education experience that I have. And I've also worked at three technology startup companies. I guess it seems like I kind of do things in groups of three. And so, yeah, I think that that background and in the various industries and organizations that I've worked really kind of bring kind of this a great mix of different experiences that I can bring to CCRI. So I am from Rhode Island and this makes it very, very exciting for me. I went to high school in Rhode Island. My family goes back in Rhode Island for generations. I'm so happy to be able to come back here. I'm so happy to be a Rhode Islander again. And I'm so happy to be able to have an impact on Rhode Islanders and helping provide an opportunity. So just really quickly, a little bit about kind of what I've seen and what's up in IT. I'm going to start off by saying IT is part of an organization to serve the organization and to serve the customers of that organization. And so I would love to hear from everybody as to what is working and what isn't working and what your needs are. You know, we're not there to kind of do technology for technology's sake. We're there to provide a solution to you. So if something is working well, let me know. If something is not working well, let me know. Please always feel free to drop me an email and I will respond. I'm getting a lot right now, so I'm a little slower in the response. But please, please feel free to just schedule something with me or drop me an email. It's the best way for me to know really what the right way forward is as we develop a plan. So the initial things that we're working on in many of these things, you know, pretty much all of these things were already underway before I started, is one of my very first focuses has to be on the organization. We're very short-staffed in the organization. And I need to take a look at, you know, what the roles are we have, what the organizational structure we have is and how we can fill roles in a way that allow us to meet the needs very flexibly in the organization as quickly as possible. And so that is my number one priority is getting people on campus or at one of the campuses working in IT. And I beg for your help. As we're posting this, please, 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 if there's anybody in your network that you would like to suggest to me, please send them our way. We need some really great people to fill these roles. We have a great IT team now. It's just not possible to do what we're being asked to do because we're so short of staff. So I ask for your help and I will also be getting out and I'll be going to venues. You know, we're going to be expanding our recruiting efforts. But we really need to build a really great team. And one of the things that I'll say is as we're talking about, that, you know, as you're talking to your friends, I think CCRI is at a really, really interesting place, right? You know, as, you know, we've been talking about, you know, remote learning is probably part of it. Hybrids always, you know, the way we teach is changing. And I think CCRI just gets it, they know it. And so anybody who works in technology, particularly anybody who works in higher ed technology, I think is going to really see the opportunity here and see that it's going to be a place that really pushes the envelope. But it's also going to be a place that's a lot of fun to work. So as you're giving your elevator speech to people, please keep that in mind. The, some other things that are already underway that I just want to make sure everybody is aware of is we are. In order to have anything in IT, you have to have a really rock-solid foundation. Organization is one of the things. The infrastructure is another. And we have projects underway right now to upgrade the wired network in all of the sites. And on top of that wired network, the next phase is upgrading the wireless network. And so, you know, getting the data moved around is incredibly important. And so that's foundational to a lot of the work that we're currently working on. And so I guess with that, I'll close and just say once again how excited I am. And I'm sorry this was so brief, but I really wanted to make sure there was time for some questions. So I'll pass it back to Amy.
Thank you, Nathan, and thank you to all of our panelists. We will get started right away with the questions. As I said, we did have a couple that were pre-submitted. But for those who are watching on the webinar, on the bottom right-hand side, on the webinar, on the bottom right-hand side of the computer screen, there should be a little gray box with a Q and A in it. If you click that, you should be able to submit a question. I hope. We're having some technical issues with the webinar platform, but I already have a couple of questions, which is great, so I know it does work. But I will start with some of the pre-submitted questions. And Dr. Kostigian, this one is for you, and it's something that President Hughes also mentioned. So in an effort to attract and retain adult learners at CCRI and not lose them to competitors such as SNU, are there plans in place to increase the number of courses and sections that are offered at line at CCRI in an asynchronous manner?
Right, so thank you. It's a great question. We have gone up to a 60-40 distribution, 60% face-to-face, 40% online. And one of the things, obviously, where we recognize that this is, this is a trend that is, that is probably not going to change significantly. As part of that strategy to really look at and build in that direction, we have hired an Executive Director for Online Learning, Christopher Springle. And Chris comes with a lot of experience in online particularly. Now, what do we need to do to do this? We need to ensure that, and this is what his work is underway right now, making sure that we are delivering quality online education. That includes that we're ADA-compatible. And what is the market analysis? What do our adult learners want? So those are a couple of the major areas that he and I are going to be spending a great deal of time over the next couple of months, several months, to really look at, engage our faculty. We want to know our students, you know, are they, why are they choosing online? Is it something that it's just available and/or it's all that's available and they're going in there, or it's intentional? But the adult learner is really, it is a market share, and talking business like this is not sort of usual for the academic here, but it has to be. And so we will be looking at that very closely. What's the demand? What are those programs that are attractive? And, and obviously, we have already increased dramatically what we are offering online. We're looking now to have more programs come in. We've got a lot of courses, but we really only have one complete program that's online. So looking to increase that number.
Right, thank you so much. I know we look forward to hearing more. Nathan, here's a question for you. An employee said, "I was pleased to learn that we've hired a new CIO, so welcome." As part of our strategic goal to increase institutional effectiveness, are there plans to launch a digital infrastructure plan? And if so, how can CCRI employees get involved and provide input?
All right, thank you. Very great question and a very exciting question. You know, I would say that the simple answer is yes. You know, we absolutely are going to be creating a plan for the next several years in, in supporting CCRI's growth and institutional effectiveness. It, it has started already, kind of, as I was mentioning before, the base infrastructure level, but nothing is going to be off the table. You know, we want to really think about how we're doing everything. Can it be done more efficiently? How can we provide a better service to our students and our faculty and our staff? You know, our students are our customer, and I'm just going to be very, very, very focused on them. And if you are interested in getting involved or providing any input, please reach out to me. I am always interested in getting people's input. I'm always interested in getting their advice, and I'm always interested in using their time to help me get things done if they're willing to do that.
Thank you so much. And Andrea, there is a question here for you. What actionable steps do you plan on implementing in your role to move the college forward and becoming truly inclusive?
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for the question. Yeah, so I think the steps that I went over in terms of the priorities that we're going to focus on are really the right next steps to take. You know, really first, building out a strategic plan to figure out how we're going to do this work, how we're going to engage our clients as well as our partners as we do this, I think is really critical. Another is really understanding the state of the state, right? So our climate and really capturing survey results, understanding how engaged we are to then understand what we need to do from a training and engagement standpoint to engage our colleagues as well as our students. And I think the last is around branding, being able to tell who we are as a DEI team so you know where to go, who to engage, and really what information you can access as you want to learn and grow in this space.
Thanks. Nathan, we have another one for you. So recently, more than 20,000 state employees, including many at CCRI, were affected by a data breach at Ripta. It had nothing to do with us. It was all at the Public Transit Authority. Does CCRI have the IT systems in place to protect the college from data breaches? And what steps do our departments, your department, take on a regular basis to monitor and thwart such attempts to breach our college data?
Yes, thank you for that question. And I think, you know, so I will answer, yes, we do have systems in place. Just, just really quickly, I've been working on cybersecurity for about 10 or 12 years, you know, very, very detailed. And, you know, what I would say is, we, you know, we do have the systems in place. In my opinion, they're almost never good enough, you know, so we're always going to be looking at that because it's always a moving target. This particular incident, as I understand it, was technical but also people. And so that's the other thing we really need to focus on, is making sure that people are always aware of their own role in securing data and making sure that we're not just downloading data to our hard drive or emailing data around. And so I think there's, there's two components of all security programs, whether there's three, there's the process and the policy, there's the systems that prevent it, and then there's the people and the training. And, and we do have a lot of that, but we're going to be expanding it a lot more.
Great, thank you. We have a few questions that have popped up in the chat, and again, I remind everybody, if you would like to ask a question live, please do so, enter it in the chat, so we'll go over to that. Alix, here's a question for you. Will exempt employees, so employees that either have a medical or religious exemption, be required to take a rapid test every day?
So the, the short answer is no, but the complete answer is, as we did in the fall, that if you have a medical or religious exemption, you will be required to show proof of the negative test taken within 72 hours of entering campus. So if you're a full-time employee and coming to campus every day, that means that you're going to be testing at least twice a week.
Great, thank you for that clarification. We have another question in the chat. Will there be any additional follow-up on the PACE Climate Survey from 2019? I'm not sure if you can answer that question, or, yeah, I think probably without Sybil on this call, probably you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So for folks that weren't here in 2019, we did a PACE survey, which was kind of a climate survey. It was a survey of all of our faculty and staff. And we found out some, some really good information about how, about how people felt about working at the college, and there was a lot of positive things in there, and there were some things that people expressed that they were less satisfied with. What we did is we took the places where people had expressed a lack of satisfaction, and we held focus groups across the college in order to really try to unpack and learn more from that. You know, and I think about, that was in 20, that was in 2019, and we've been in a pandemic for two years. So I know that everyone's been working really hard to create community and maintain connection while we haven't all been together, and I think that that's been really important. And I also think that we found out as a college and as a community that we've done things that we never thought we could do. And so I really, what I see going forward is actually working really closely with Andrea and the DEI Council and really thinking about how we continue to do this community work in a really meaningful way. So I don't know if I see it exactly as a follow-up to the PACE survey, because we did do follow-up right after we got the results, but I do see it as some really meaningful conversations about how we are as a community, how we function as a community, what, how we want to continue to better ourselves as a community.
Thank you. We did get a few, couple of additional questions, if we can take this extra time. One, will the, what will the cafeterias be open when we return? How about for the person who asked that question, I will make sure that we include that information in an upcoming CC Daily for them. But there is another question. The college, as we know, has been working on a remote work policy. What can you share about that policy and how close we might be to launching it?
I have a lot to share about that, actually. Last week, the President's Council approved a remote work policy. I think that, Lynn, thank you for asking that. I completely agree with you. It is a recruitment and retention tool for the college, and I think it's an opportunity to acknowledge that we, we are an institution that can function in a way that other institutions and businesses do and be able to offer that benefit to, to our high-performing employees. So the policy is done, the procedures that are behind it, including making, we're doing some training videos and things like that, are under production, as is a workflow about how this gets approved. And, and so we are, our intention was to make it available for people to start to apply next week. We're actually going to, that was a, that was a very flexible schedule we put together for ourselves. We're going to give ourselves a little bit more time, because when we launch it, we want to have tested it and make sure the systems work so that, well, mostly so HR doesn't go crazy. But I'm, I think it is an exciting, I think it's an exciting evolution for the college.
Great, thank you so much. So I don't see any additional questions popping up in the chat, and I know that we are a little bit over the hour right now. So why don't we say, we'll end the questions and answers there. If any do pop in, and I know there was one additional question that I will answer in CC Daily, if you have any other questions, please email marketing@ccri.edu. Again, this was recorded, and we will share it out at a later time, but I would like to turn it back over to President Hughes for closing remarks.
Thank you so much, Amy, and thanks to everyone, all of you who were able to stay for the duration. I take complete ownership for the fact that we are a few minutes over and really appreciate those of you who submitted questions and those of you who were able to stay. I was very eager to get Andrea and Nathan in front of this community, and I think sort of feedback for myself going forward is, if we're going to do this in an hour, it's, it's possible that five folks is perhaps a little, a little too many. So we either need to make it longer or reduce the speakers or topics. But I really appreciated everyone's participation. Can't wait to see all of us coming back in just a few short days, and just thank you all for your engagement and all you're doing for the college. Excited to, to keep moving forward with all of you. So thank you all.